Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to me on the pledge. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, just as in law. We've called a special meeting just for the purpose of the solar eclipse that's going to happen sometime in April, I think. The subject was brought up about counting employees. Maybe getting off that day. So I think Amy has something. She's got something set up. You want to show something, Amy, on a slide?
Yeah, I was just gonna go over what to expect that day because a lot of people probably don't know. We've never really experienced a total solar eclipse, so I was gonna go over some of the concerns that day so you have full information.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay, we are sixty-two days out from the total solar eclipse that occurs on April 8th this year. And it goes from Mexico out through Newfoundland and Canada, and it stretches the big chunk of the US. In Indiana, it stretches from southwest part of the state over to the eastern part of the state. Sixty-two counties are in this path of totality. And a little more in depth, if you look at this map on the right, you'll see red outer lines and a blue inner line. Anybody that's within that gray area of the red lines is in the path of totality. And those counties or areas that are along that blue line are considered centerline counties. So they will have the best and the longest viewing opportunities. In the state, Benson's has the longest viewing opportunity at Fort Smith. And we here in Franklin County have just over three minutes of totality. So what you might not understand is the eclipse itself is going to last about two and a half hours. The partial eclipse begins around 1:51 PM and the partial eclipse ends at 4:24 PM. But the totality is about three minutes when the moon is totally blocking out the sun, which will occur around 3:07 to 3:10 PM. So during the totality, you'll be able to take off your super cool eclipse glasses and look at the sun without glasses. But other than that, you'll need some eclipse glasses. And during this eclipse, the sky should be about as dark as twilight, so you should be able to see constellations at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, which is really cool. So what's the big deal with this? Total solar eclipses in any one location are rare. They happen about every eighteen months somewhere on the planet, but in any one location, it happens about every four hundred years or so, somewhere between 380 and 410 years. The last time it came across central Indiana was about eight hundred years ago. And the last total one in Indiana was 1869. The next one in the US is going to be in another twenty years, but that's only going to hit parts of North Dakota and Montana. And the next time it will come here in Indiana will be in 2099 and will just be in the northern part of the state by initiative. So this is the one and only one we'll get to see in our hometown, probably in all of our lives. There are several different types of eclipses. There are solar eclipses and lunar eclipses. Solar obviously having to do with the sun and the moon blocking out the sun. The moon comes between Earth and the sun. Then there are lunar eclipses where the Earth comes between the sun and the moon and we cast a shadow on the moon. So lunar eclipses are pretty common. But with a total solar eclipse, it's this one, let's see, like I'm pointing to it, right there on the top, is where the moon completely blocks out the sun. There's an annual one you may have heard of that happened last October out in the west coast, and it went from Oregon, I think, down to Texas or something. That one was an annular solar eclipse where there's still an outer ray of the sun, so the total one is a pretty rare event for here. Quick information, we have some of the best viewing opportunities in the United States for this. We're supposed to be the second most popular viewing state after Texas. And as you know, Texas is a lot bigger than us and can hold a lot more people. But Indiana is within one day drive of two-thirds of the US population. There is an expectation that we could have anywhere between a half a million to two million visitors in the state. We are expected here, since we are in the path of totality, but we're not a centerline county, we're expected to have two to three times our daily population increase. So estimating 23,000 people here in the county, we're expected to have another 50,000 visitors, up to another 50,000 visitors. And that's going to be a big draw on our local resources, our hotels, our restaurants, our gas stations, our public safety people. That's going to have a big impact on those folks if everything pans out the way it's expected. Our primary threats for this are disruptions and life-threatening accidents, transportation accidents, communication disruptions. If we have another half a million to two million people here in the state, there's going to be a big spike in data usage. So there's a concern that cell phones may not work, internet service may not work properly. We could have major traffic jams, which could cause a delay in any emergency response actions. We could have traffic jams and wrecks. Secondary threats are the increased demand of local resources that I mentioned, mass gathering issues, including a spike in drug usage. These are, this information was being pulled from other communities who have had solar eclipses in the last few years and what they saw. Primarily the 2017 eclipse that started out in Newport, Oregon, and went through a big slice of the United States. Health-related issues such as sun blindness, some people, they think it's okay to look at the sun without glasses, and it really isn't. And then increased 911 calls and mental health concerns for people who may not have heard about the eclipse. They may think, you know, the world is ending because we can see stars at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. Animals have somewhat strong reactions to these things, so you might hear increases in animal calls, parking, loose dogs, you know, creatures doing weird things. Potential threats, the biggest one I think is going to be, or one of the biggest ones is going to be traffic. We have three main event locations here in the county. Here in Brookfield, I'll have stuff happening at the town park, but we'll also have stuff happening at the fairgrounds. The Mount State Park or State Recreation Area is going to have a lot of camping up there and boaters on the lake. And Metamora is having events as well, and I'll go over some of those. Concerns are for fuel shortages, regular fuel and marine fuel, traffic lines in the 2017 eclipse, normal travel time from Indianapolis to Memphis, Tennessee, which was in the path of totality. Normally that would take a five-hour drive, but getting out of there was a seventeen-hour commute. So we're talking about long delays. People were running out of fuels on the highways and American Red Cross had to come in and do fuel deliveries. So we want to make sure that we think about those things ahead of time. We were anticipating to have some bridge and road closures due to end-dot construction along Route 1 between here and Lundy Grove, but those have been delayed until April 9th. So we shouldn't have that go here anymore. And then ingress and egress, we expect people to start coming into the county on Friday afternoon, possibly Saturday morning. There are a lot of events that are happening over the course of the weekend because this is a Monday event, they want to get people in early camping. And then I expect that the outflow will be happening around 3:15 to 4:30, the start of the outflow. But that could last several hours depending on whether we have clear skies, whether we have cloudy skies, or how many people come into town, et cetera. Another concern is out-of-state or out-of-country guests. There are people called eclipse chasers that chase eclipses across the globe. Some of them are known to buy out houses and hotels, not rent them, buy them, and bring in their friends and family for the event, and then sell those back after the event. So there are, there's a potential for people who don't speak English or don't understand local laws to be here in the county. There are also people who like to stop alongside the road or in the road, particularly on the highways, on the shoulders of the highways, on the medians of the highways. Here on county roads, they, you know, they might be stopped in the middle of the road, so just use caution when you're traveling those days because people do weird things. Increased boat traffic on the lake, they are expecting to still be, I believe, be pregnant, if I'm wrong, but I think they're still going to be at the winter levels with the dam. And I think all the arenas will be open.
Right, and there will be two ramps will be opened here to the low water at that point, but there will be ramps open.
Okay, so increased traffic there, increased minor wrecks there. Disrupted emergency service vehicle responses. With the traffic jams and the amount of calls, the call volume expected to go up, there could be delays in getting emergency services to an incident. So we're asking people to, those who are hosting events, to have like a Boo Boo station, a Band-Aid station, try not to call EMS if you just have some minor injury and can take care of it yourselves. Standard motorists for a problem in the 2017 eclipse. Let's see, car accidents, airspace issues. People who have drones may want to be flying during this time because what a cool thing to get drone video of in an eclipse. We have about fifteen medical helicopter landing zones in the county. So we're going to try to get a temporary flight restriction over those zones so you can't fly your drone anywhere near where a medical helicopter could land. And at the very least, we're going to be putting no-fly zone signs out there. And then disrupted school buses, school pickup on Friday and possibly Tuesday. I don't know that that's going to be a major issue, but the influx of traffic on Friday afternoon or perhaps late levers on Tuesday could be a problem as well. And if you didn't know, school is canceled for Monday. Other potential threats are weather. Big concern from Endot and the Department of Homeland Security is what if part of the state is clear and part of the state is cloudy? How do we handle that? What if people decide that, oh, the east side of the state doesn't have clouds, but the west side does, so let's all scramble over to the east side of the state? We're going to have major congestion on those routes. And then my big fear is what if we have a day like that? Oh, get it. What if we have a day like this where we have a high risk of tornadoes or flooding or severe weather? And now we've got people in our county that have no idea how to receive severe weather information. We're going to mitigate that by putting informational signs up around county that teaches them how to sign up for ENSO. We're going to put it in multiple languages. And then communications, there's a big fear that the statewide 800 megahertz system, which is what public safety uses to communicate to each other, that may become overloaded. We have been working on a communications plan for our county responders since October. That is just about finished. We're coming up with a lot of things that we didn't know existed, that maybe certain departments don't have channels to talk to each other, or maybe they don't know how to use their radios. Doesn't really apply to you guys, but the cell phones may not work. If you can't get a call through, the next best option is to text. Texting takes less data usage than cell phones. And if not, create a backup plan with your family, and I'll talk about that in a second. And there's also a fear of possible dispatch overload. So I know John's got all his staff on duty for this whole event. This is what we call a pace communications plan. It's a backup communications plan. I would suggest you create one of these with your family. All goes well if phone lines work, you don't need this thing. But if the phone lines are having problems, you could have backup communications plans. So your primary communication plan is probably your everyday phone call, text messages. Your alternate plan may be to use some sort of chat app like Facebook Messenger, WhatsApp, Slack, Snapchat, or Zillow. Zillow is like a walkie-talkie, turns your phone into a walkie-talkie. And then a contingency plan would be like those family radios or an actual walkie-talkie. And then if you have an emergency, maybe you have a plan to have a time to meet at a certain location at a certain time, and if somebody doesn't show up, then you know there's a problem. So these are the events in Franklin County. The ones that are in red may have an impact on your travel. In Brookfield, we've got activities happening at the town park and people hugging on. There are some other activities going on at private venues. Franklin County Park are having camping, a pickleball tournament, food, music, and maybe some other events. And then there's shopping on Main Street, Main Street. Laurel is having wine and viewing in a winery. I know Husband Acre has something planned, but I don't know what yet. And then Laurel Elementary School, they're going to have charge for parking at the school and have some viewing sites and maybe have some hot dogs and chips and that kind of stuff. Metamora is another one of the main event sites. They're going to have a Dark Side of the Moon Festival with camping, bonfires, games, tinfoil hat contests. They're going to have a music festival. They're doing several white breads, and they're doing train rides as well. And then Mount Carmel Elementary is also going to have parking in their school lot as well as some viewing and vendors. This is a map that is being worked on by one of Shelley's people. If you don't know, Shelley's been having events for the community stakeholders. I've been having events for public safety. And then there are, the town of Brookfield has been having meetings as well for the town events. This is, anyway, so this is the front of that map that we have that will be available to visitors and will be on the website for the Chamber of Commerce. And then this is the back, which has information for the town of Brookfield and Metamora. And then I put this on here as options to consider for county staff. There are really two main departments that are supporting the eclipse, Sheriff's Department and Emergency Management, and then two other agencies that we may need some staff from the Health Department, the Highway Department, and then other agencies that aren't directly involved in the eclipse. I just listed some options for consideration there on the bottom. I think that's it. Is there anything else you want me to talk about tomorrow?
No, just pretty much covers a lot of it.
Okay. Anybody have questions? What to expect that day?
Amy, what, and we touched on these, but what are some of the events again that have the groups that have been working on advertising? Shelley, you probably answered that. Where we are, what we proactively do, like choose where people can't enter here?
Let me get to the microphone.
If you go to Tourism's website of Franklin County, folks.
If you go to Franklin County Tourism's website, they've got a place right on their website where everybody is sending their events to, so all the events should be listed there together. The biggest one I think that's been advertised quite a lot is the Metamora up in their Gateway Park. They've had a lot of reservations already for campers, starting Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and if you, or yeah, I think it's Friday through Monday. And then if you stay the weekend, they'll give you Monday night free. They're trying to help with, you know, all the traffic waiting at the same time. So it sounds like they're going to have like a weekend-long festival, so that to me, you know, seems like one of the biggest things. The other campgrounds are getting bookings already. I believe the hotel is sold out. And then Main Street, I think all of the Main Street events, well, there's going to be one on the courthouse on the day of. A lot of the local events, like Arts Council, things like that, they're going to happen like the week before, or local libraries are going to have things prior to that day. So they won't affect traffic and things like that. But all of the events that we know are listed under the Franklin County Tourism's website. If you've seen any of the postcards, the eclipse postcards around or the signs, there's a QR code on there that you can scan, and it'll go to that website, and you can see all the events that are listed there.
I was curious, since we're all moving up there, and I had talked with Amy before, you know, if you want to plan, or if you have to plan for an event, but it's entirely possible that...
It's an option.
It's an option as well. But I haven't looked at it because I haven't been involved in any of those meetings yet. But I thought that was a day that we, I didn't know it was the Monday until now, so that plays better for us, this community, as far as bringing people in because they may make a long weekend, other versus the last day after. I just did, I did research to create, started on Airbnb. You talked about campgrounds that are on Airbnb, we had for the weekend, including Monday right now in town, they are all looking. I'm sorry, I guess I was to ask several.
And I think, Pete, you're going to be fully staffed, correct? And the town police, Terry was in the meeting today earlier, and they're going to be fully staffed, so our lone unfortunate is going to be, Amy's got people at four locations, three locations. EMA's got people at, at four locations. The, let's see, Margaret Berry Health, I think Reed, and who am I missing? The three, the three emergency places are going to be, they're going to be staffed. Public Transportation is going to have six to eight vans that day. I need to talk to them a little bit about what their plans are, if they're just going to stay and wait for calls, or if they're going to be going to different places or what they're doing. I think Metamora maybe was going to try to get some of them to come up there, bring people into town on the weekend if they wanted to come into Brookfield, you know, through the day. The map that Amy had up there, that will, when it gets finalized, that will be out on Tourism's website as well. And it will have parking locations, viewing locations, different restaurants that are having things. Let's see, I mean, it's got, it's got quite a bit of information on it. I'm looking at my notes from earlier here. I know that Deb Sperling went to the Cincinnati Hall and Book Show end of January. She was there for like four different, four days, something like that. And she said that everyone that she talked to there had already made plans that were coming in Indiana. So she said she had the postcards and things there, but most people that she talked to, they already had booked things or they were planning on coming. This was for Cincinnati. She's going to be up in Indy for theirs later on this month, so she'll know more about, you know, there, you know, closer to other places. But as far as Cincinnati, a lot of them said that they're coming, they're coming across the line, so.
Deb, do you know if we have had, Brittany, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Do you know we've had increasing calls asking what the process is for like food truck licensing? If people are planning to bring food trucks in for permitting those food trucks? Have we had any call and asking about that?
So not really. A lot of the food vendors that do come in normally know the process. I spoke to Brookfield Police Chief today and reminded him that for all their people that they got coming in, that they need to do that. Dave is trying to work on a reminder, send out to the vendors to be like, hey, don't forget to get your permits in, to be inspected, and that sort of stuff. I believe the Brookfield Police Chief is going to be doing coordinates in effect in reference to those food trucks. Trying to create one of those, that hopefully there is an ordinance in reference to food trucks, make vendors here in town, or here in Franklin County.
So will they sell, or ask for that today?
They called Dave, called the Health Department and asked for Dave.
Do they have any RAC issue for that, or do you have?
There's a $20 fee, and then he's got to do an inspection of your setup. He normally does like canal days, he'll go down and check all the food vendors down there at the fairgrounds, see if they have slows. So this will, just, you'll have to go out and check those.
I was curious about, you know, another way to track who's planning to come and if they're going, those food trucks are going to go where they get crowded, so.
Brittany, Brittany brought this up today in our meeting with the stakeholders about the permits for the food trucks. So she told anybody that was having any type of event, that we're going to have food trucks to make sure that they contacted Dave. But the, I don't know if it was obviously listed or not, but the elementary school and the high school probably going to be designated parking areas as well, parking viewing areas, and they're probably going to have their concession stands open. And there's, because we were concerned about the schools, didn't want the schools opening their doors for anybody to go in, so they're going to have just the concessions open and then people can go to those restaurants and not actually be going into any of the school buildings because we didn't want that, you know, to happen, and these school buildings to be open.
Questions here, those from any area of Arthur?
Not until we know what you're deciding. I mean, we called around to several of the counties that are in that path of totality and Rush and Johnson County had added it to their holiday schedules already last year, so it's something they haven't been planning for. DeCader County swapped out Columbus Day, gave up that holiday in exchange for the eclipse. And then Union, Shelby, Jermaine, and Wayne County are all, sure.
Obviously, we have concerns about employees getting to work, getting home from work, parking, you know, in terms of bigger than, we had had someone reached out about using our parking lot here for you. For, obviously not going to do that for parking, but downtown, if Court Street is closed, is that correct?
Court Street.
So, so parking down behind for employees on the courthouse will be, will be open for their parking everywhere.
See, tourists are going to be parked anywhere they can. The employees for the courthouse, I don't know.
They got designated spots, it's marked.
What?
All the employees have designated spots, they're marked.
We have people parking their spots all the time.
And.
So I don't think that should be a problem. I mean, if they're parked illegally, I guess you told them, I don't know.
I think employees will be able to get to their jobs, but I can't guarantee that employees will be able to get home anytime soon.
And that was a conversation that Amy and I had as well, was just, you know, getting to work in the morning shouldn't be an issue. If it is a perfect day, if they think it's perfect, there'd be, and the issue becomes getting out of town there. You know, getting back home later on. And I can start with Court Street, and I know the town said it's, you know, there doesn't get parked there, but if the, granted, that organization used a courthouse launch that day and town's planning to close that street, then, you know, I don't know how we'd be able to tell you about there.
As far as I know, Ford Lutz, Pay Street is going to have Ford Lutz across Court Street. And I don't know what else they've got planned for out there, but they said they worked with Dawn to get traffic for, for customers into a restaurant. I don't know what they got set up, but I think this Court Street is going to be closed, a trap.
Just a trap.
And the SCMB is still deciding whether or not they're going to be open because if they close, their parking lot will be available for parking in town. But they don't know yet, they're, they're going to decide where, where they're going to be. One other thing, this is not, this is not related, but I wanted to say is on eclipse glasses, Tourism, Deb Sperling, Tourism Boarder, 10,000 pair, and she's going to give them, disperse them to different organizations in town that are having events. I ordered 3,000, and I'm going to give them to all the students and the school corporation, and hopefully the teachers and the administration as well. The library ordered 1,000 pair, and they're going to, I think they're going to advertise that people can stop in and pick those up because they're getting harder to find now.
I have 250 pairs of compensation.
Just don't add it as a holiday. If you add this as a holiday, it's going to mess everything up with our timing system because all of the overtime is calculated on the holidays that the Sheriff's Office does. It really does mess everything up.
I mean, leaving town, most of the folks, say, live out of town, and the stoplights going to work? Are they going to shut the stoplights off or?
No, stoplights will be working and controlled by the Traffic Management Center in Indianapolis. Initially, we're going to give us local control of those. They said it's easier and more efficient if the Traffic Management Center runs those, so they'll just be rolling those along.
Let's see, but I don't know.
I don't, I don't see a problem getting out of town if the stoplights were, I mean, we may be delayed a little while, but getting through the line. I mean, we may be delayed a little while, but getting to a light.
Is there any other roads or streets to be closing Brookville, other than Court Street?
I was thinking, there's something about Dead Street that I can't remember why. I do know that Court Street is closed.
It would be closer to town, it's an actual dispatch, almost because it's a traffic or EMS and law enforcement, it was closed. It will be an issue if Court Street is closed due to the fact that we have to run into the courthouse for any reason or anything up and down there. So it could be an issue.
We have firefighters, the Street Department, and the Utilities Department, as well as police on traffic duty, rather than. But I can't guarantee any.
Yeah, it's waiting to see. It may pour the rain that day.
If it rains, it'll be another.
Yeah. I'd say we're a long way off yet. Couple of months.
It's in the middle of a pay period, so people shouldn't be able to adjust their hours correct. Since it's in the middle of a pay period.
And so he's the first guard of the period.
No, because payroll's due that Monday.
Yes.
It's in the middle of a pay period.
Can't hear. Somebody saying something? Oh. So I'm sure if any county employee wants to take off, they got vacation time or sick time or personal days, or time, time, everybody wants to. I think we should stay open for business.
We're sparring ways downtown to 101, 52, and 252, and, and sitting there, so surely might have to make a little deal or, or get out somehow. Or you could probably want to go there.
Yeah.
So as far as, I don't wanna add additional day off. We do have time available for employees. We have offices like those at the courthouse, I think that might be moderately impacted than those here. If we're not allowed right, all the parking up here. Downtown, it's gonna be a little crazy here, so they would be able to, be allowed to manage hours in their office that day.
Yeah, they're elected officials.
So if he wants to close their office that day, give, allow them to take their own time, they can do that. If they have that.
We can always play it like here, but, you know, I mean, we're parked there and then we can't get out to go home because everybody's pulled in, you know, that, I mean.
And, you know, who you're playing.
You can work from home, so.
Yeah, we had talked about this earlier, we had talked about it last year, and why some of the others went down and, you know, substituted this particular day for Columbus Day or another holiday on our calendar. But being where we are now, if we call it a holiday and we get there, you know, the Friday before, we've been all over for a dark weekend of spring storms. It's, it's a nominee, but I think we just consider the, keep it as, as is, give the individual offices, the, or, or office that would be before necessary if it looks like it's gonna be a very day. I think the target, it's expected that if he wants to close their office or another office down there, we'll see who's gonna be there.
Yeah, she's elected official, she has it right. But, you know, if you give some employees off, then the Sheriff's Department's still having to work, the highway's probably gonna be working. They don't get a day off. And we hear it every snow day, you know? We didn't get a day off a day. Thank you. Leave it up to judgment of each, each elected officer. Unless something comes up in the next month or so, you know, we know for sure that it would have to be something. How do you guys feel about, Jolene, you're elected? You good?
I'm good.
Carly, you good? So for now, we'll stay open unless something, extenuating circumstances come around. Anything else?
Jamie, you mentioned this during, I think briefly or maybe in our discussion beforehand, but you were looking for volunteers?
I would gladly, thank you, yeah.
You have the new president's here today, you wanna tell us what you need?
So my plan is to put at least two people at each of the main event sites, as well as myself and a ham radio communications person and dispatch. I am planning to have one communications expert and one medical person at both the, at the state park, at Metamora, and at the 4H Fairgrounds. And I don't have enough people to also put them in Brookville, but I think Brookville seems to be pretty well covered. So if I could get an extra person or two to help rotate in and out at the plants, I would love it. My reason for putting a comms person at each site is because we have a fear that maybe the radios in the plan that we've created may not work. So I want somebody to be able to reach back to dispatch where I'll be sitting outside, so that we, dispatch and I can communicate together and figure out how to solve whatever problem there is. In order to help EMS, because we expect an increase in calls and a decrease in response time, I am planning to put an EMT or a nurse at each of those three sites as well to kind of help with the boo-boo station, Band-Aids, cold packs, these things, that kind of stuff. Just to assist EMS in getting the problem solved, so we don't have to constantly call EMS. My other fear and something that came out of previous recent eclipses is the increased drug use. I spoke to Brittany this morning, she's got 40 doses of Narcan and she said she could do a training for anyone interested in how to use Narcan for drug resuscitation. That may be something that we train DNR folks, the Army Corps folks, the law enforcement officers, basically the public safety people on how to administer Narcan. So if you're off that day or interested in helping, let me know, because I'd love to have some extra hands. And you'll get a very cool pair of glasses to go with it.
Have you heard from DNR or Army Corps with their plan?
Yes, we have a meeting with them as part of Shelley's group and as part of the public safety group, so yeah, we're working on a communications plan. That's our, our biggest accomplishment from all these public safety meetings is making sure all public safety agencies in the county and the state partners can communicate that day. They're expecting a lot of busy signals on our normal channels and top groups that we use, so they're trying to create local, as I say, I mean, the state public safety communications group. They're trying to help us create local groups so that we don't overwhelm the system statewide. Because those counties that are along that blue centerline are going to be jamming up that system, so we're trying to create a back-up plan for that.
Traffic noise, I know one time we talked about, it's gonna be a trip for the traffic. So aren't going to, it's all that up, or DNR's still expecting big traffic?
DNR's expecting a big crowd. I think their camp sites are still out, have been for quite some time. We're meeting with them on the 15th to talk about their planning, I have them in February last year, we hunted. And then we're meeting again on the 15th to work their, kind of their final plan. There was some talk about making the state highway out there a right turn only. I don't know if that's still happening or not. I'm hoping to find out on the 15th. As far as the Army Corps, I've spoken with them a couple of times. I'm not sure that they have a solid plan yet. I know that they are talking about the viewing sites open and then as soon as they fill up, just close the gates. I don't know what their staffing looks like for that. I do know we are talking with them on their communications channels on their radios, making sure they have all the channels that they need to be able to talk to all the important agencies. So we're working out those little hurdles there.
Mark Shire said he was hoping that down by Spillway, they could have a helicopter landing zone.
To my knowledge, that's still happening. We're keeping that as a link, but they're keeping that as a link, so. I haven't heard anything yet that says, no, they're not. But I'm hoping to, we have a meeting this Thursday night with all those public safety partners, including the state and federal ones. So we're gonna address landing zones as well as the topics. There are three landing zones, designated landing zones that want to close as landing zones and charge for parking instead. So we have a discussion with responders on whether we do prioritize landing zones or whether we need to keep them all open.
Well, we were talking about this, we wondered how many helicopters would be available that day for all the crowds?
I don't know. If you look back at that initial map, that began, this one, you can see that Cincinnati is really not impacted all that much. The northwest part of the other county is impacted, but really, the city of Cincinnati isn't totally impacted, they're just minorly impacted. So my great hope is that any of them coming out of Cincinnati should be available. The ones that are coming from Indianapolis or Richmond practically aren't available. That's probably something to talk with John and his folks about, is will there be a change in service for those? I haven't heard anything yet.
The state number of air ambulances aren't available. It really depends on where the calls are. If there's no calls, air takes available. If there's calls available, you'll have to go down to the list. There always will be at least something available to my guest chair.
And DNR said that today, well, in private, previous meetings as well, that they, they will have boats on the water, on the lake. And then the conservation officers today, they said that, that their cell phones don't have priority service. I don't really know how they do that, but.
No, there's, like, hotels, yeah. There's something called GUESS. It's the Government Emergency Telecommunication System. It is basically like a credit card that gives emergency responders priority. You have to sign up, put your phone number in, they mail you this little credit card looking thing. And then there's something called WPS, which is Wireless Priority Service that goes with that. Basically says, if you are an emergency responder and have this card and you can't get a call out, you can dial this number and they will put you at the top of the list to get a call out. So you get priority with the general public. So that's, that's what.
But either we're at GUESS or we're getting at GUESS.
We've been talking about that at all the public safety meetings, so the majority of public safety should have that.
Amy, are you hearing of individuals just running out their farmland?
I've heard the rumor, but I don't know of any specific ones. I've heard that some people are throwing parties in the rain out there, but that's just hearsay.
Anything else? All right, thanks everybody for coming. I'm gonna make a much better journey.